Siyana mungela genonke eseni kona abane bazubebesjuina kota siso beskuwek Mbingeleleke kwa shonishwa abakona ngapaka mbiili Eh komitele finance lele lula ngapamili Bese uba umeya umsumusi ubaba utibona So besemwatuula amanu kuweju Eh lele komitele ngapo finance eh kuninonke Koto abengunu kuti you are all welcome Eh This is the introduction for members alanga pambili Apa eh lele niwa lift baba unundaba Honorable Sunny Honorable Tikhaki Eh umeya weju umsumusi uba utibola umshonishwana Kubbe umshonishwa umaljoba Eh naangia kala Bese umshonishwa umaljoba bese kuti ngaliwa ke Kubbe umshonishwa usu Eh isona memba kunezi ime bese asusjuina kela Ntabangutikuma umshonishwa eh umanchinga Befunile wati wambigile kana nukotuzelilini So besesjuina ke mokubeka umshanga Na utefedatu Isotela ubaba umeya sengase siku kolela kuno Umshoka eka rasa mungili Kinilia sile kuwe bese ya sanga mungili Honorable Mene Kunesi mbingelelo ke Kubbe kutuwa session doenbengsungilele nganake sasema romeni Jemba sika le eh no forty days eh bula baba ngakolo Sasema romeni koto umshonishwana nganake sbingelelo saba kwa sumatana Masutinya sasen eh somuti Wange tisangona Nitispete Eh ninjaani itu me sanguana Sanguana ninjaani Siyabonga kaku Engia standa sbingelelo ngoba Shanga monu umshangi When manifestation Boku is fish of South Africa Sixty nine years ago When they met in Klimtum And the following year Basel EBA is more so much as issue African National Congress They had dropped a long born oomparatwa sasafrika Ababeti corner Tina bandu base sasafrika meeting here City Clarego to sasafrika belongs to all who live in it Black and white And there are kogulomeni that can claim authority over the people of this country Unless it is formed through the will of the people which is through the ballot paper Amani amadlos that The people said meeting there Was that the people should come And of course For the past thirty years Yes, particularly in the South African community where a fairly very young democracy Thirty years was so much money But we have really seen the people of South Africa governing The fact that you are given an opportunity regularly to decide and choose the government of your own Ishu muti muconu tiles kwenzani But most importantly We realize what if people are governing not just through the ballot paper By an opportunity that we are given as a band base sasafrika to make laws Oma Kesha yungu tetu nomi mumpi Sitoli tu bauguti Sebin ye ye yokunsekisutu nomu tetu So umtetu abantu Aywa napashonishwa bashen Yako la umshonishu muti ngaku Na namshangi sishangenele Ugusoko klangu umtetu swifini obandeke kanga No public procurement What is unfortunate Napa shonishwa umutisu discussa umshangi Nomabu deskati Genya yabatile ekutema bebona Isu edetu likutuka likutuka towards Nlokunzana imajority abantu Babo nukutava incantolo beu challenge umtetu yetu Iga kubasi umtetu yoktransformer is sasafrika To be a country that belongs to all as Abantu base sasafrika bapupa sixty nine years ago Because I fail to understand Okuti oma Yiningi nabantu base sasafrika ku ya bandu abashukeaayo Ekufaneli mutisenzu ktilenjenko kulumeni wa bandu Kotoli impilo sahbo spenzo Kubekona bandu abasosuma bati yongi umtetu nishayaayo Whether he be active whether Or employment equity none but will legal Ba ko challenge to appoint yokutiketekero Utsena manikumu kulumeni Anga sebenze to all because Your decision to support the previously disadvantaged and demoralized Ishu muti borongo Nekushu muti kavashonishwa snengi nama But we are happy again baba The government of the people and the current government took a decision of course Whether ingubadi pokwa incantolo noma uguti Where the band is what he have been a section And in kusho kute in wencamini Abatiswa Abane bedu ah for the people Abane bedu really want to see Umnot always without it to transform Kubbelesanjene sabantu abashukeile Nabandu da bao gubona abayiningi Eh sengit Unless the government takes a lead Unless kulumeni makes policies and takes decisions That will deliberately support Abantu bagiti then kushu muti kese We don't want to see a continuation of what happened in 2010 Or as we prepared for the 2010 World Cup When in week five because of their capacity we will meet and decide Okuta kwenzaka leneswenda eti Basu nukubona noko ye bokwakuku construction Koto kukona kionaye onkimkaka Ekunmisa unnot when the president won abantu Yako lo put hours to Tisia shinchang Sinigesa even ah bo abasek That is why when the president Therefore da he parlemented as we nonge to the state of the nation Abane when he spoke of a thirty year old Somebody was a room nineteen ninety four Who is a beneficiary of transformation of sasafrika Some shangi sanga regardless utava abati Because we knew Okuti sasafrika is indeed a country that is moving forward And it's a country that is starting to work for its people Koto agangse isu adre sampatwa shenrose to wencamini To the city of choice Eh city of yetu and hope Okuti nada baba puma ngapandle base mkuuncho Will enjoy discussion abasoslanana Nitoke koto bese nea puma game see What this city has to offer So kchapleda keno bokto kuno soma business Puti nipumente nispende Food ma kwenzanga umshonishwa shalise basbalanana Kwenzanga ubawa suboni kuti Usetawi nilanai center when his status And the party of ashani kenjo ibanati Of course Recognize it for the informationana to inform The direction that this country Needs to take Eh siyana mungela nunki thank you very much Eh aspindi forty Sundege siso me elinfaneli abakona honarunea Sebo akul Eh padatwe to ke Also See no Legal advisor we to was a latest nature Okungu sisi uferma bejami Welcome And also also translator Amlotu leso ituruse napshua isu Sikelere ukutiwalo uferma esobe esutunela Bill Eh Osobakona umwe te stenu kuti asuwa zuktranslater for all of us to understand Okuti innedu eseso entana Umwe to eh utulasi iswe ununda Eh amlotu ununda apsho zukutu is too low But not yet I'm still gonna just Eh the background of our bill And the purpose of this meeting Firstly Eh Greshungu susu and then I will take it to any issues This bill procurement bill Oh angbi nefuti kibingelele atekla We also invited those CFOs Bakomasbala Ni bonile u susene ilala Eh amsho bakona bana bakona lenka bagona Because nomtetu kakulu procurement bill ikubogo Iboni melu kutubalege kutbaya understand the cantolo kuse kwas Balegelela bantubagiti kubakosiskati Some of these bills ike kubenga zuti siya wachelega Kandi kumele kubechana Lakmele kona kubekelelu the previously disadvantaged communities Kumele kubechana asiksonis So inga kubalegele na kubaba ekona Eh that is why we also invited them I believe also other departments also are present And also I think Atekutshara as well Ukso legelela in case kukona abati muglegelelo Kumaregistrations of their companies or ukona ele had outstanding Bakona la basuwa zukulegelela tiki bani dafulala Abi mungu mokenga pamsisandu Okutbanga la Onengi nga on company registration or ele had government Engende kutisashota kuwe Eka tekmelu kutioslungisa bakona la Okutbasoslegelela kutislungisa noko The background and objective of this bill Eh injongo kenkangi umtetu swifiniyo Na ulawo uktenwa kwenpala Kulumeni nokubeka ingongo Okusosentenzelo pezwaayo Ekukaliseni uktenwa kwenpala Okunu kubonelela No underline elo Na wa even okbonelela Angeti niyakumbolo kuti The apartheid campaign this way go it was three hundred plus years Si pila gulelo gulelo bill And then now we are on thirty years with democracy We're still trying to mend some of these bills now olo Ingakubale kutichale na weteke lukubiehelo Okusoguazu hamasana nesmanji Enye enzo so yalepili inayo Oh what's in gizi ulimlo lukbolewa It is the main aim of this bill is to regulate public procurement and to prescribe A framework within which preferential procurement must be implemented Remember nangeskizi term must be So the Swiss gives a favor When we give you opportunity to the previously disadvantaged communities So the IT bill must be implemented So again ntabangutipack ground here chukaku nu and the purpose Yalumshanga nesusela la ukso kwenta lokun And then therefore As a sense of the presentation again Our legal advisor ucesuferma Isobizaena abesa kala sense of the presentation Then umwe to uyobese itoli kangesisu Sisu no target lakmele konati nasfunku wenta ma comments kona Sesiyo bekanasasomba mesebeketi lukpresenta please note Wela konongesuwa ngakon Then to besesikengezi chuba Logutunge nekubuse Okunyeke guago es es isimbendu Special is technical because National treasurer uye otema senseelezi Eh lama yearings lawa kubanda banega baksha Because our next yearings isuwa singa antla Esu shanda boko basbalanale Bese enyesolandela isuwa senu kassela kote so ba kunka duwa zetan Zetan ausa if I'm not wrong Then isobisita thousand So kutbomka bantu bagoa zukso beka isimbozabo Ules tribielu salomte So again isoni kese la ucesuferma over to you Michi
Thank you honorable chairperson Sanbanani good morning everyone My role here today is to briefly take you through the public procurement bill And thereafter we want to hear from you Your comments on the bill And your comments are quite important And it will be noted down and form part of our report That goes to the National Council of Provinces on the twelfth of March Just as a way of introduction The Public Procurement Bill I will refer to it in its shortened form the bill It was passed by the National Assembly And it was transmitted to the National Council of Provinces Or the shortened form NCOP For concurrence on the sixth of December last year And then the bill was referred by the NCOP to the KZN Legislature For consideration and formulation of mandates on the bill Now we are enjoined by section one one eight one of the constitution As the KZN Legislature To facilitate public involvement In the legislative and other processes of the legislature Hence the need for this public hearing on the on the bill And as I said before any public comment will be taken into consideration In the decision to confer authority on the provincial delegation Of the KZN to the NCOP To either cast a vote in support of this bill Or in rejection of this bill Or to propose amendments to the bill Or to abstain on voting on the bill Those are the options that the delegation will have And those options will be informed On what we hear from members of the public So your role is very very important The main aim of the public procurement bill Is to regulate public procurement as the name suggests And to prescribe a framework Within which preferential procurement must be implemented We find that there's a fragmentation Of laws which deal with procurement in sasafrika And this bill aims to create a single regulatory framework for public procurement And it seeks to provide for the establishment of a key office Called the Public Procurement Office Within the National Treasury It also seeks to prescribe its functions The functions of the Public Procurement Office It also seeks to provide for the functions of provincial treasuries Also the functions of procuring institutions Those are your government departments Your municipalities etc And it's also to provide for measures Pertaining to the integrity of the procurement process But it's quite quite important We there's a need to combat any corruption In the procurement process so that This bill also provides for measures To maintain the integrity of the procurement process The bill also seeks to provide for a preferential procurement framework It provides for general procurement requirements It provides for enabling regulations On the procurement system Including different methods of procurement And different regulations for different types of procurement It also provides for the use of information and communications technology In procurement and this is moving in line with The move towards e-services and Technology It also provides for the repeal and amendment of certain laws And the most key one being the Eh in in because of recent court Decisions based on the preferential procurement regulations There's also going to be the repeal of certain key legislation as well In terms of the bill it comprises of sixty eight sections And one schedule and that schedule contains the laws to be amended or to be repealed Chapter one of the bill deals with the definitions The objects of the bill The application of the act who does the act apply to As well as the administration of the act And clause one is your definitions Part of the bill It sets out certain key definitions that are used in the bill For example the terms accounting authority Accounting officer bid emergency procuring institution And so forth Clause two provides for the objects of the bill Which are to introduce uniform treasury norms and standards For all procurement procuring institutions To implement their procurement systems As envisaged in the constitution It is also to determine a preferential procurement framework You'll keep on hearing this from time to time And that framework will be for all procuring institutions Within which to implement the procurement policies As envisaged in the constitution Clause three of the bill does everybody have copies If you don't you can collect them at the back You can follow along There's a presentation as well as the bill itself And on clause three It sets out the application of the bill And the bill applies to a department As defined in section one of the PFMA or the Public Finance Management Act It applies to a constitutional institution listed in schedule one to the PFMA It applies to a municipality or a municipal entity It applies to a public entity listed in schedule two or three of the PFMA And it also Is provided for in clause three That the application of section one and the chapter four As well as any regulations Made in respect of preferential procurement To also apply to parliament as well as provincial legislatures Chapter two of the bill which is clauses four to eight Talks about the Public Procurement Office that set up in National Treasury It also talks to provincial treasuries and procuring institutions Clause four provides for the establishment of the Public Procurement Office Within the National Treasury And then clause five provides for the functions of the Public Procurement Office Which amongst others include Promoting promoting compliance with the with the act by procuring institutions Which includes promoting and taking reasonable measures to maintain the integrity Of procurement and you'll find that's quite an important trust Of the bill to maintain the integrity of the procurement process It also includes guiding and supporting officials And procuring institutions to ensure compliance with the act And one of the other functions of the Public Procurement Office Is to promote the use of technology and innovation And leading towards modernization of the public procurement system Another function is to develop and implement measures to ensure transparency in procurement Another function is to monitor and oversee the implementation of the act And the last function is to issue binding instructions on procurement And when these binding instructions are issued by the The Public Procurement Office It means that these procuring institutions have to follow these instructions Clause six of the bill deals with the functions of provincial treasuries I'm not going to go into it but you can have a look at it in the bill itself Clause seven of the bill Indicates the functionary responsible for making decisions On behalf of a procuring institution And namely the person there is the accounting officer or the accounting authority And you find the language now is aligned to the The Public Finance Management Act As well as the local government municipal finance management acts Clause eight of the bill deals with the duties of procuring institutions In terms of this this bill Chapter three is an important clause Uh chapter three is an important chapter of the bill You'll find a theme that's recurrent in the bill is Maintaining procurement integrity So clause chapter three provides for measures To protect the integrity of the procurement process You'll find in clause nine officials bidders Suppliers members of the tribunal And any other person involved in a procurement process Are required to comply with the applicable codes of conduct prescribed by regulations So regulations are going to be issued That will prescribe codes of conduct To ensure the integrity Of the procurement players Clause ten of the bill in addition sets a requirement for the conduct of persons Involved in procurement Clause eleven of the bill Requires procuring institutions to take steps to identify automatically excluded persons And these are listed in clause thirteen of the bill As well as the immediate family members as well as related persons As set out in clause eleven three of the bill The bill also requires persons involved in procurement Or a person related to the official Or that other persons or that Another person to disclose a direct or indirect personal interest In the sudden procurement Now these are transparency measures And it promotes ethical conduct And are important in the bill Clause twelve of the bill prohibits any person from unduly influencing a procurement process It's an important clause Clause thirteen lists persons automatically excluded From submitting a bid so those persons listed in clause three thirteen of the bill May not submit a bid Clause fourteen of the bid provides for the process to be followed When directions which are inconsistent with this Public Procurement Act When these are inconsistent with the act Are issued by persons with authority to affected persons so what happens is If a person in authority in a procuring institution Um provides directions To any player in in a procuring institution Which are found to be inconsistent with the procurement bill So there are options here the person doesn't have to comply with those kind of directions And there's also reporting procedure That if you are instructed by someone higher up to say do this and this and this And it's inconsistent with the act Then this you can refuse as an actor in the process as well as report Those kind of instructions Or directions given to you Clause fifteen of the bill Provides for the issuing issuing of something called a debam to order And this is issued to bidders or suppliers Or any directors members trustees Or partners of that bidder or supplier or any directors, members, trustees, or partners of that bidder or supplier. And it's issued by a procuring institution under specified circumstances. What is this debauchment order? It prohibits the debauched person for a period specified in that debauchment order from participating in procurement generally or in circumstances specified in that order. And what happens is those persons who, um, are debauched from participating in procurement, their names will be kept in a register by the Public Procurement Office. Um, and that register is called a register of debauched persons. So you'll see that there are very strong provisions here to combat any sort of corruption in the procurement process. Chapter four of the bill is a very, very important provision. It's the crux because it, it deals with your preferential procurement, uh, provisions. And you'll find in clause sixteen of the bill, it requires a procuring institution implements a procurement policy providing for categories of preference in the allocation of contracts. It provides for the protection or advancement of persons or categories of persons disadvantaged by unfair discrimination as envisaged in the constitution. Clause seventeen of the bill provides for set-asides for preferential procurement. While clause eighteen of the bill deals with pre-qualification criteria for preferential procurement. Clause nineteen deals with subcontracting as a condition of bid. While clause twenty of the, of the bill enables the minister responsible for trade, industry, and competition to designate sectors for local production and content. And any preferences not provided for in clauses seventeen to twenty of the bill, they are enabled in clause twenty-one of the bill. And those kind of, uh, preferences will be prescribed in regulations. You may not see it in the bill itself, but regulations will be issued. Clause twenty-two of the bill makes provision for measures to advance sustainable development and matters such as beneficiaries and innovation. Contracting conditions relating to preference are dealt with in clause twenty-four of the bill. Chapter five of the bill, which are clauses twenty-five to thirty-six, deals with general procurement requirements. And I'm just going to quickly briefly touch on it. Clause twenty-five requires that the Minister of Finance prescribe by regulation a framework within which procuring institutions must implement a procuring system, procurement system. Regulations are also to provide for types of procurement methods. And the thresholds for procurement methods will be determined by the Minister of Finance by notice in the Government Gazette. Clause twenty-six regulates the use of another organ of state by a procuring institution to obtain goods and services, construct, repair, maintain, let, letting of assets to another organ of state, et cetera. Clause twenty-seven of the bill sets out steps accounting officers and accounting authorities must take to prevent abuse of the procurement system. Clause twenty-eight of the bill, I'm sorry, I am going quite fast. Uh, it's sixty-eight clauses. I want to try to get through them all. Um, clause twenty-eight requires a procuring institution to establish a procurement function as part of its procurement system. So a department will have to have a procurement function. And it's, it's to be responsible for amongst others, the implementation of the functions in terms of this bill, the supply chain management system of the procuring institution, the maintenance of the supply chain management system to ensure its effectiveness and efficiency. Clause twenty-nine of the bill provides for a bid committee system to be prescribed by regulations. So you may not find it in the bill itself, but you'll find that a specialized set of regulations will come out that will deal with the bid committee systems. Clause twenty-nine prohibits the following persons from serving as members of a bid committee. And you can note them. A public office bearer cannot be served as a member of a bid committee. A person appointed in terms of the Public Service Act, uh, section twelve A. And any person having a conflict of interest may not serve as a member of a bid committee. Clause thirty of the bill requires the Public Procurement Office in National Treasury to progressively develop an information and technol, and communications technology-based procurement system for all procurement to enhance efficiencies, effectiveness, transparency, and integ, and integrity, and to combat corruption. So it's a useful, um, tool to be moving towards an e-based system. Clause thirty-one requires procuring institutions to, to use components of the system as they become operative and to use technology in the implementation of the bill. Clause thirty-two to thirty-six are access provisions in the bill. And it requires regulations to provide for the public, civil society, and the media to access, scrutinize, and monitor procurement processes. So it's not going to be a closed book behind closed doors, but there are going to be access provisions to allow members of the public to be able to access, scrutinize, and monitor procurement processes. Clause thirty-three continues with regard to access and it requires that regulations determine the requirement for disclosure of procurement information. Clause thirty-four deals with documents that must be available automatically. So you don't have to apply for it. It's available automatically. Clause thirty-five provides for access by certain authorities to information held by the Public Procurement Office and provincial treasuries. Clause thirty-six of the bill deals with the protection of confidential information and personal information held by or obtained from the Public Procurement Office or a provincial treasury. Chapter six of the bill, uh, deals with dispute resolution provisions. That's clauses thirty-seven to fifty-five of the bill. And clause thirty-seven of the bill provides, uh, for, for a right of the bidder to seek a reconsideration by a procuring institution of its decision to award a bid. So if a bidder is denied a bid, there are provisions, um, and, and ways to seek a reconsideration of that decision. And you'll find that in clause thirty-seven. Clause thirty-eight of the bill establishes the Public Procurement Tribunal, which is, which will be there to review a reconsideration of a decision taken by a procuring institution to award a bid, bid, or secondly, a decision to debauch a person in terms of clause fifteen of the bill. So in those two instances, you have recourse to the Public Procurement Tribunal, which is a tribunal that will be set up in terms of this bill. Clause thirty-nine to forty-six provides for the appointment of the members of this tribunal and all other matters related to the functioning of the tribunal, which I'm not going to go into at this time. Clause forty-seven provides for a panel of the tribunal to hear a matter. And clause forty-eight of the bill provides for rules of the tribunal to regulate proceedings. The right of review by the tribunal of reconsideration of decision taken by a procuring institution to award a bid is provided for in clause forty-nine of the bill, while the review of the decision to debauch a person is dealt with in clause fifty of the bill. Clause fifty-one of the bill provides for the fee payable for a review. And the review proceeding requirements are set out in clause fifty-two of the bill. Clause fifty-three lists the orders that the tribunal may make. Clause fifty-four deals with the right of any party dissatisfied with an order of the tribunal to institute judicial review in terms of the Promotion of Administrative Justice Act. Clause fifty-five provides for a standstill process. But that we mean while a decision is under reconsideration by the procuring institution or a review by the tribunal, it will be a standstill process. However, emergency procurement can still happen during the standstill process if it's justified. Chapter seven of the bill merely provides for the general provisions. Clause fifty-six provides for the investigation process by the Public Procurement Office. And the office is to investigate any alleged non-compliance with the, with the act. And if requested by the relevant treasury or by a procuring institution or even on its own initiative, if it has reason to believe there's any non-compliance with the act, the Public Procurement Office can investigate. And for the purpose of investigation, clause fifty-seven also authorizes the Public Procurement Office to enter and search premises of a procuring institution, an official of a procuring institution or a bidder or supplier to whom a bid has been awarded for the purposes of investigating a procurement-related matter. And as we know, such as, such an entry, it, 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 um, you know, it affects the right to privacy, right to dignity. So for certain entries and searches, a warrant is required. And you'll see that stipulated in clause fifty-eight of the bill. Clause fifty-nine of the bill is a delegation provision. It allows the Minister for Finance and the Minister for DTI to delegate provisions and responsibilities to the Director General or the Accounting Officer. And clause sixty of the bill exempts a person from civil or criminal liability from any action taken in good faith in terms of this act. Clause sixty-one of the bill is an offensive section. And it provides for the criminalization of the conduct of any person who amongst others knowingly gives false or misleading information or evidence under the Public Procurement Act. Um, any person who interferes with or exerts undue influence on any official of a procuring institution or a member of the tribunal in the performance of their functions. Um, it also criminalize, criminalize, um, okay, sorry. Any person without authorization opens any sealed bill, bid. Also, um, it will become an offense. Any person who connives or colludes to commit a corrupt, fraudulent, collusive, or coercive, or obstructive act related to procurement under this bill, it's also an offense. And any person who causes loss of public assets or funds as a result of negligence in the implementation of this bill, it's also regarded as an offense in terms of clause sixty-one. Clause sixty-two of the bill provides for an exemption to be granted by the minister to a procuring institution from any provision of this bill, including regulation, when undertaking national security-related procurement or for procurement partially or fully funded by donor or grant funding. Those are the grounds for, uh, the circumstances when an exemption may be granted by the minister. Clause sixty-three enables the Public Procurement Office and provincial treasury to approve departures from a provision of their instructions. I did mention the directions, um, and instructions issued by the Public Procurement Office. You can approve, um, departures from the instructions, but these are under specified circumstances. Clause sixty-four of the bill is your regulation provision. And it enables the Minister of Finance to make regulations on certain, um, matters. I'm not going to go into all of it, but you might find certain things are not covered in, in the bill. But they may be covered in regulations which are issued under this, uh, this bill when it becomes an act. Clause sixty-four is an important clause. It sets out a public consultation process as well as parliamentary scrutiny of any draft regulations to be made. So it means the minister just can't make the regulations and publish it, uh, as regulations. But there has to be a public consultation process, um, as well as parliament has to scrutinize the draft regulations before it becomes, um, turned into law. I'm going to go try to quickly finalize, uh, the presentation. Clause sixty-six deals with transitional measures about bids awarded or advertised before the commencement of this legislation. So there's no need to worry. These transitional measures sort of bridge the gap. So there won't be any gap by the time this bill is enacted. Clause sixty-seven of the bill proposes amendments and the repeal of certain laws. And you'll find in schedule one, all of those laws that are amended or repealed are set out in that timetable there. And what's important to note is the repeal of the Preferential Procurement Policy Framework Act. And you'll note, you may have heard about, um, certain challenges to the preferential procurement regulations issued under the Preferential Procurement Policy Framework Act. So this will aim to come up with a better piece of legislation and repeal, uh, the Preferential Procurement Policy Framework Act. Actually repeal and replace it. And clause sixty-eight provides for the short title of the bill and also provision can be made for different, uh, parts of the bill or the act to come into operation on different days. Um, I'm going to leave the substantive part of the presentation at that point. I want to take the opportunity to invite you to submit written comments. Um, to Lani, I'm not sure if that slide, okay, is up. Uh, you may submit your written comments in one of three ways. You can, the easiest way is to email your comments through to, uh, I'm going to spell it, C H I L I at kznleg.gov.za. Or you can send it via post for the attention of Mr. Sipamandla Lili. He's the coordinator of the Finance Portfolio Committee, Private Bank X nine one one two, Peter Marisberg. Or you can hand deliver your written comments also for the attention of Mr. Lili. And at the admin building, which is just across the, not far from here, which is at number two forty-four, Langali Balalele Street in this lovely town of Peter Marisberg. If you have any inquiries, you can contact Mr. Lili on zero three three, three five five, seven six zero zero. Mr. Lili, if you could just, oh, he's just walked over there, but he's the guy. That's the coordinator. If you have any questions or you need any details, you can see him after the public hearing. That brings me to the end of my presentation. And we're going to have a, a short translation for those of you who were, weren't able to follow in English. Uh, thank you, Siabanga. Uh, thank you, Siabanga.
Iska ba tres ona stazanu ksebenza kwa mtejo sviwiniyo. Futi siti lo mtejo sviwiniyo kusebenza niangweini kwa taso iska beni. One, somtejo kwa tato imali. Two, eskongo weni esungu lengo kumtejo esparu lekshetun. One, womtejo kwa tato imali iska kulubeni. Three, kumaspara no ma eskongo somaspara. Four, nasesukungweni iska kulumweni esparu lekshetun. Two, no three, womtejo kwa tato ismali iska kulubeni. Iska ba three, sifine futi sifengele u ksebenza iska ba one. Isasi ko four, kanyana no ma ebi 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 mtejo mungu kusloso. Sela sela sasi ko four, kteko kubashaka kulela kwa pana mene na kusha mtejo sifundas. Sasi ko two, siji office kteko kubashaka kulubeni ama office ifundas kwa tani mafa. Kanyini kunge itenka. Sihinseke la sumku loko office kteko kubashaka kulubeni. Apaswa office kumtani mafu kazo lo office kaba five sora. Siku luma kusebenzi ya, apaswa ugyi banda kana. Kuta za kula nelo kwa mtejo eskongo estenayo. Two, kuta za tata isnyatelo eskongo sile. Uktenkoto kteko kubashaka. Three, ukunikeza iholo. Nguwa seka issebenzi nisukongo estenayo. Kusegi sa uki, lo mtejo uya lani. Kuta za ushage nso kusokpeche ukamka na masa mashanu. Four, ekutuli ni kushele kubashaka kulubeni. Ukti tutegi sa ukalisi isnyatelo. Sumkisegi sa ushage kesele sobana ktewo weni kubashaka. Kalo sa ukakala kaliswa kwa mtejo. Kanyi nukishwa, kwe miyalelo ni kobe zilani ni kutewa kubashaka. Iska ba six, sora siku luma kusebenzi ama office ifundas. Abatani mafa uki i kusebenzi ya. Iska ba seven, iska ba seven sora. Sihinza kisukulu kusulele nukata i nomo ekamele. Lesukongo estenayo. Kati iska ba eight sora siku luma kwe kungo esitena. Sasi ko sixteen, eschinda iska ba nine kwa fifteen siku luma koto. Oktewa kubashaka nukishewa. Eteleni iska ba three, sihinseke liyatelo sukfige nukoto be mungu ni kutewa kubashaka. Apeswa lo kwa iska ba ten, simegi mfunegosu kuspataku muto boi kleni ni kutewa kubashaka. Iska ba eleven sora, sidi ngongo ba isukongo. Isukongo estenayo, estenayo, esati nyatelo. Shonza bando abaki shewa kwa pana. Kemo kusomosa kuska ba dedine kanyana madungasonele mniya kuli shosamu. Kemo kusomosa kuska ba eleven three. Lo mtejo sviwiniyo uki na futu ba abainka iki ni kutewa kubashaka. No ma kumuntu shoyele isukulu, no ma lo kumuntu. Kuba kano uliki seke lo shoso yake dekondi. No ma uliki seke lo shoso yake deka kondile ni kutewa kubashaka. Besu kuska ba ten, iska ba twelve. Sifipe la no ma ubane kete la ule kugnafanele. Oktewa kubashaka. Iska ba dedine sora stigasroshu. Ra bando kwa fuyele kufala ebi. Iska ba four d. Sifitele nukufaneli lani. Umadi gondise na kamsala ro mtejo sikeswa. Abando abana kwa party, deba dreni abati deka. Iska ba fifteen sora siku luma kusheka kwe yarelo kwe wa itelilo ababida. No ma abasinseka ibasha, no ma ipa kwa gondiso hala mbo. Aba pati no ma balina bado bida. No ma umshinseki basha isukongo estenayo. Apaswa sipo, eschi. Sasi ko four, eschida iska ba sixteen kwa twenty-four siku luma oktewa kubashaka. Okwonele, okwonelela, sijige lisa iska ba. Sila ula oktewa kubashaka, okwonelela. Futi iska ba sixteen, sipokelela uki isukongo estenayo. Sika li si mubongomo ni kutewa kubashaka. Ehsinseke la nukugnanelela. One, imkaka ni konelela uki kuabiwa. Uki kuabiwa isukondile. Two, nukfige lo, no ma kutu kisoka bando, no ma imkaka ya bando. Abana sange kwa kigelelu iki kwa kubashaka. Kungu kina plungiswa, kemo ba kusho iska ba two. One, seven, two, no three, somtejo ssege lisa iska beni. Esse iska beni two, kanyi nusaga nusasi ko four. Sasi ko seven d, sifengele, 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 sifengele. Oktewa kubashaka, okwonelela. Iska ba eight d sora, siku luma kwe mbanela mikogo. Ebu kuna sika li la mukunoktewa kubashaka, okwonelela. Besu kuska ba five, iska ba iska ba twenty-five, ten, thirty-six. Sora stikukumungo oshera beke lebi mtejo mungu, abeki mtejo mungu. Osobe ka musha na bisukongo estenayo. Esesul seven d, sakika li sini, kushele kubashaka. Iska ba twenty-six, sila ula ushage nso kusheki sakio sika kulumeni isukongo estenayo. Uktoya iska basha nesenzisa. Ukuka, uklungisa. Toina kanyi nukukashi sakibasha kusheki sakivo, siga kulumeni. Iska ba twenty-eight, sidi ngongo ba isukongo estenayo. Sumku lukigo luktenka, jengi kanyi yoshele luwa. Oktewa kubashaka, kaka tgo ugyi, olusogwenziwa, logo. Olusogwenza nukugnanelela. Ei, kalisu kusebenzi, kua lo mtejo sviwiniyo. Kanyi nukoshele, no la ule, kuxinseka kubashaka isukongo estenayo. B, nukutino aboshele, nukuxinsewa kubashaka. Ukusegi sa ushage sowe lo, wa lo meleno, na kipho. Iska ba twenty-nine, sifengele, kushele, komidi, la mami. Olusobe wa mtejo mungu. Besu kuska ba ten, sidi ngongo ba office. Lokteko kubashaka kulubeni la kushele, leso trepeche bolase. Nesukuma na, olusogwana nukteko kubashaka. Ukuseki kono nuksebe. Seven, sara kumelelo, seven sara kesele sobana. Nango koto, misana ni kusaga. Iska ba dedi one, sidi ni kunge itenka estenayo. Ukba issebenzi se, lo lukoshele, kumasara ushage nso kuto ele futi. Sifengele sotrepeshi, eka li sini, kua lo mtejo sviwiniyo. Iska ba derejusona, sidi na mtejo mungu ekonele kubashaka. Abati la ki, nimtongu ya besi nama. Bakua sufigelela, mkuwa basha sisi, kushele, noktewa kubashaka. Iska ba derejusona, sidi, sidi ngongo ba mtejo mungu. Unomo isukonegosu kala lo kuloas. Noktewa kubashaka. Iska ba derejusona, siku luma kwe mbanu, kufaneli sari tola kana. Iska ba derejusona, five, sifengele, tola kuloas iska ba itimana. Olteni office oktewa kubashaka kulubeni. Kanyana ma office ifundaswe abatani mafa. Iska ba derejusona, siku luma ukfige kuloas olindhi. Noloas no muto, olteni no ma kultolo office okteko kubashaka. Kulubeni no ma office ifundaswe, liga, abatani mafa. Sasi ko six, sidi da iska ba, siku luma derejusona, seven, yak fifty-five. Iska ba derejusona, seven, siku luma kwe lungelo, lo bida, lo muto uye nufagi bidi. Loktele, ukugezo kusomo, sesukongo estenayo. Sukunikeza i bidi. Iska ba derejusona, eight, siku lue isukongo. Sukteko kubashaka kulubeni. Besu kugezo, one, isukongo eschata isukongo estenayo. Sukunikeza i bidi, no ma two, isukongo, sukbeka itelini, muto, umuntu. Nukuska ba fifty. Iska ba derejusona, yak forty-six, sihinseke la, koko kama lugo isukongo. Kanyi nese ni dama, ipatilini, nuksebeza kusukongo. Besu kuti iska ba forty-seven, siku luma kwe mbaneni isukongo. Ebu la ndawuyola ilalela kudama. Besu kuti iska ba forty-eight, sifengele, mtejo isukongo. Ni kula ula, ukusala, no, kula ula, ukusala kwas. Sasi ko six, sidi da iska ba derejusona, seventy, yak fifty-five. Esiku luma kwe lungelo, 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 kugezo kusukongo. Isukongo, eschata isukongo estenayo. Niskele, iska beni forty-nine, besu kugezo kusukongo, soka beba, muto itelini. Kulu yena, iska beni fifty, iska ba fifty-one, sora, siku luma kwe imali, ni kokiro, kugezo kusukongo. Iska ba fifty-three, sini kesa kusho, kwe miyalelo isukongo esnaenza. Besu kuti iska ba fifty-four, siku luma kwe lungelo, la no ma ilu pikusaga. Olungatuliseki ile kumiya lo kusukongo. Lokuti nufagi esteno, sukugezo itadolo. Okufumela no mtejo kutaso kungiswa, kusukata kwa two thousand. Iska ba fifty-five, sihinseka, sihinseke la, ukuma t. Ukuma ze kushele, iskati isukongo estenayo. No ma saku kusele isukongo. Sukumela uki kwenzi ni kuteka, okutumayo male siskati. Kuma uki kunisiti. Sasi ko seven, sora sidi da iska ba fifty-six, biako sixty-eight. Fifty-six, ushinseke la kushele, kope, ulitwa office oktewa kubashaka, okulubeni. Yenala uki iska ba fifty-seven, sifide sonyazi, office oktewa kubashaka kulubeni. Ukuti lingange, nalise, shama tere kisukongo estenayo. Esse, esse benzi, esukongo estenayo. No ma obida, no ma umshinseki basha, kune kusewe kusebenzi. Umala bena kudama, bolkonene nukutewa kubashaka. Iska ba fifty-nine, sini kama nja, umkongo shesemali. Kanyi umkongo shokonene, nesukwe, esesmo ni, nuksebeza. Umkonde sijigelele, kwe office nesuwa lelone nukutani mafa. Isukulu sifigwa kusukiga, no ma iska itimana, esifigwa kusukiga, sesukongo estenayo. Kanyi ni office oktewa kubashaka kulubeni. Oku kushele msebenzi, nini kusele lo mtejo sviwiniyo. Iska ba sixty, sifige la, no muto, etmangalelo ini, no ma kushele, no ma isifiseno. Asenzile, mukladelo. Mukladela mkuwetemega, lo mtejo. Iska ba sixty-one, sisi kaba, esikondene, nama tala. Futi sihinseke la, tata jenge tala, kuspataku no ma imukumuto. Pakati go ugyi, owenzaloko kladela. Ei, achi azi, anikeze kuloas olngelo na, no ma kuloas. No ma fakasi, oktuki sa, kapa swa lo mtejo sviwiniyo. B, okamukela, okunge mtejo, eksebenzi, nwa no ma isifiseno, esukongo estenayo. No ma kweni ulule sukongo, kwenzi nwa li msebenzi ya, no ma eksebenzi nwa lo amala, kapa swa lo mtejo sviwiniyo. C, oti kenga kunyaziwe, avule i bidi, ebi sivali. D, otreba no ma ashiles nyenyela, ukwenze isenzo sengusaga. Iska ba sixty, sora sifengele, mukulula. Mukulula, okunikezo umkongo shesukongo estenayo. Ebu la ndelele, b, no ma i b, sifengele lo mtejo sviwiniyo. Okpanda kani mtejo mungu, no ma oktewa kubashaka, nini nesukefa, kaso longe, no ma oktewa kubashaka. Ni imali, ni nigele, iska ba sixty-three, sora sigeza manja. I office oktewa kubashaka kulubeni, office lisifundaswe nukutani mafa. Oku kunyaza, tresu, esikonseki nisonyalelo, wa lo, kapa swa sipo, eschi. Isasi ko sixty-four, sini kesa manja, umkongo shesemali. Kuba enze mtejo mungu, ma ilana saswa kisinda ba esbalulu, na onatili. Kulu mtejo sviwiniyo, ei, fana nisinda ba somteko kubashaka, okwonelela. Kushele nukuteko kubashaka, isikela somteko. Mbabisano, mbabisano, kuska ba nismele. Noku sa ino, esikondilega, esifunegi. Ushage nso kusukulushaga, kubashaka, nesenzisa. Kanyi ni mikomo, ni kuspa. Besu iska ba sixty-four, three, no four, sitasai nongo, ni konsana no mpa. Kanyi nukshulsiwa i pana mene kumtejo mungu. Ebu usaga. Besu isasi ko sixty-four, seven, sihinseke la, imkaka, iya shkeni isukongo. Suktena kubashaka, imkaka iya shkeni, ni kutewa kubashaka. Iska ba sixty-five, sisi, kulu luma kushele, kusantana, ngapu. Kuba i miyalelo, iki, eshi. Besu kuti tiska, iska ba sixty-six, sora, siku luma kwe, siska. Ma ilana no ma biki, asenye sive, no ma asenka, kesi. Kapa mukala kushebenza kumtejo. Iska ba sixty-seven, sihinza kusokpeche lo nukritu. Kumtejo tiri, ekugete, kushekele, ya lo mtejo sviwiniyo. Sfara, kati, nukritu kumtejo usaga, kule kumkoma ni kutewa kubashaka, okwonelela, kwa two thousand. Schetun one, tasa kusokpeche, nukritu, kubashaka. Tete mta, nina sasebenzi, sotritu. Isuwenelo, mtejo ebo ti, lombo, sula matenga, kana idin sixty-eight. Mtejo oktewa kubashaka, kaso longe, kana idin sebeti. Kanyi, nalo, waka mufa, mtejo usaga, nukuteko kubashaka. Okwonelela, kwa two thousand, desotritu, okpele. Mni, ebi, mtejo, isukokjeema, je, ngoba, ukaso, kule shetun. Sonke gi, kushele, kwe, no ma mofena, uki, siyame, ya sokke, uki. Si, tumela, isitulose, edunimono, isipose, edunisivaliwe. Uma wangata, tumela, isiposa, kwe, imono yako. Ngokonena lo mtejo sviwiniyo, utuwa, wangilecha. Ee, le, yonbono yako, epaliwe, ega, kajuli, usaga, eight. Uma chi kulu niaga, kwa twenty twenty-four. Kusarezisa, eho, ya lisitila, isla nila, uma tumela nginmeili. Ee, i, kenlegi mailo, nga tumela klona. Liti trili at kznlk.gov.za. Zelkina, trili at kznlk.gov.za. No ma, isiposa, ngasbo, sange posi. Uspegisela, pakumnumzani, uspamana trili. Kungu mti mani, sifwe kumi, kulesesemali. Ee, esha, mtejo savasungada. No ma, usletematu, uma, uwe lo, oketa. O, uma, kumenzekutu, no, unimbozo, na no ma, ilimbozo, muka chalela lo mtejo sviwiniyo. Sifela, useso, kollegi, uki, nda, umnumzani, uspamana trili, kulia, email. Kaso, ege, trili at kznlk.gov.za. No ma, umshage, kuti, inumbulu, eh, zero three three, three five five, seven six hundred. Zepina, zero three three, three five five, seven six hundred. So, ibama, nisiboka. Eh, asbonge, kapu, nukwa four two, noted our presentation. Muli mlo bolewa, kani. Na ngunu kama mchangi, siyabunga kuno. Yate mukuti, we have noted, last full, mgena, corner, tina, because, remember. Lo mtejo, ngani, amso, nuswe la. Lo mtejo, umkusetun, tawo, nukwatu, kuso, ngi. So therefore, kubalegi, nukutu, konde, umkusetun, tawo, kubatu, kuso, ngi. Ukuti, kufunushele, nganjelani. Nukonde, ilu, lula, kutela, amalpele, kupi. Wela kono, buona kono, kutsi, enga, to have been shortchanged. Ikopi la, nga challenger call. So this bill is almost approved, you, and then therefore. Eh, oksolande, la, kuswa, ma input. All inputs by you, as you have listened to the presentation, eh, ziwela. So therefore, tinaso, this is tata, your inputs. Amma inputs, kasa, kuzarangi. Your inputs will be taken. Eh, uma expect, uki, yonkeso pendula, because, na, we are going to submit to National Treasury, uki. These are the inputs, what, Olele, from M Sundus, as this is done throughout the country. And then, is on my seat, tati, where all your suggestions or your inputs, then, tina, will submit them. Those that need some answers, yes, you might get some of those answers, aso, be konala. But technical issues will be submitted, in the main, towards, um, implemented, wale bill. Will be submitting to National Treasury and also, I think, power, mesepi, submit also. To i pana mene as well, so, koto, wa manje. We are actually giving you this time, uki, nibege, your inputs. So, this is what, tata, mukandera, kwa. But, before we do that, eh, can I then introduce other honour members who have just joined us? Bengi, shiroge, i, apoluchi, eh, ya honourable, manjenga, na, kusefigele. Eh, besu kuba, honourable Rashmanzi, who have just joined us. Eh, honourable members, we are welcome and also we have received, i apoluchi, i honourable Kavenna. Eh, kante. The members that have just joined us. And then also, abandenga, sangenbati, wava, baligile. The staff, ssbenza na, so. Eh, ukona usisi, uno, do, umli. Eh ukona usisi unoto umlif. Waka triple P. Eh public participation office. Na angela pangimufa. Entangutu yenbatenbalisa mangenala. Sibidospa waka trili. Our committee coordinator. I think oh ukona. Bese siba nomveto again utula sezo rasundi. Oh senior eh. Language practitioner we legislator was unada. So uyobega dekonala. And then bese usisuvarna nange ngamthula. Our senior legal advisor of our provincial eh legislature. Bese siba nomveto ubizola butula nange mbonanga. Okutu oh. Na angela bakubkakaka. Oka iti yetu. Umanga besenda le msebenzi. Uye. Osilegela yagulo kaka kaka masasibenza. Without further ado. I think eh sesuva leloto. Okutemva oklalela. Sezwa. We need. We now need your inputs. Thank you. By show of hands. Can we then maybe start from this side? Then sisom. Ngisokolisa. Okutikenga nbizika makama ngoba. Abanyangso babon. Abanyanga babon. Eh ningolelman. Nigese number. Just je. Uipambi number akutuso bo number banii. Sisokala la. Bese siya mufa siya ngala. Nisobanigesa nabafu itabala paya. Pezu as well. Can we then start? By show of hands. Okay. Singina eh. Un number one. Four two. Un number two. Eh three. Kono number four ngala. Okay. So usinabada bafu ngala. Eh ngisokalekutuzishi kama ubuya kupi besu ya kala. Eh. Umyalazo akufunugu uzuli. Egeje. Si ngongo repoyti. Siya bo akon. Akobe. Si parlamenti nisati shortcut haki. Malenza nomsebenzo balaya. Nje ngoba o regulation eh twenty seventeen. Wari piroi constitutional court. It's because umwinis tawitati shortcut. Slan. One ninety ninety six. President umande ela wateela obabuchefhaten. Notchefamanual. Okutbakale. I program yugrevuwa we procurement police. I apartheid is state centered board. Wakewa ekren paper slan. South parliament malenza lemtetu. Lenza njaa. Kwa nekren paper. I publish why. It's a comment ekiyona. Akfiwa nomteto nje. So wenzwa ma corrections slan. Lenza ma corrections nina na naz. Kano mtsetu. Ekren paper ya on eighty ninety six. Slan. We also know. Okutii ya beguetelen nganjani kon. Kon. Is a parliament umakaze ya thulala. Na online. Ikoni ekren paper. And it's very clear. Yekren paper ngoba. Ya ipoga. Ngishuku tuwa manya masu wakati tundese legile. Afana nazis. Tafiki akulgazi. Oh Malaysia. Benza njaa ngibona. Kuzenamslanju umnoto ase Malaysia. Joba tundesela wanda banani. Betendesela wanda banik. Nje ngat. After that years. Umnoto wabue la nganjani sanse slawanda banik. Yelo kusikfunu. Umabe nazis kuluma local. Manje kota sokuluma ma corrections slan. So okninga bestelukuti process. Siya objektakiona. In this society. Awaki shwekren paper. Ibu yeke shwekren paper. Kumewi white paper. Bese iya ku process yokutieoba. Ii i i i add. Goba emtsetu. Ibu yeke zanganja slan. Okutuwa lekela fotoku no kuna susukushu. Lapakutu. Kucha ta two. Lowet procurement office. Eh unestna treasure usukulue. Joba snisho ninga. Okutii. Unemtsesemninga. Samu wika ngisamange. Into one document. Unestna treasure bese anoma regulations. Etikere etikere la mitu. Tuke tuke. Oxiswa. Oxiswa e blinking. Oma le procurement office. Isasoba nganisna treasure slan. As court. As court oksebezabalu kuto umnoto zobue. Uzasa lenzabo. Goba i department. Episalane umnoto. The department of trade and industry. Aisu ele procurement function e la. Kuzema ifiya la paslan. Isoslanani so epomteto roto. No PE. No local procurement accord. No inter-africa trade. Eh ikunu me indo e roto. Uto umnoto. Uzo fulo nganeflo umnoto. Sison nganaganjani nsinabanta babmyama. Kona. Kolti si sugile wakangisna treasure. Wala. Abandawafana namachafi ko. Abaknia. Abakmisayu mukichim. Paknegi tsegitu. Uxulakona. Okubeku kichima. Futs. Dawo. So ai kinto nje abasitengayo. Kulemyagi uteti. So seklala kitalu okutige. Nala apakula nom presidential procurement eh kucha ta four. Kuma shalangat. The constitution ekli. Section two and seven. Puta kubenama category. Of preference. For advancement of historical disadvantage. It's a simple lesson. Seklala so kuteklala. Akubenama. Matenga. Nomakonrat. Actuarile konrat. Kumpita banu biswa sa nepe. Goban. Banu soka sana siya bazu. Bakundesilege. Lendisibiza ngat triple challenge. Kubenama tsendezwa o yut. Kubenama tsendezwa. Awabanda babmyama. Abo olaga oltsi. Nalu kuxashwa ngoblekifunu akon. Bese oktrinashla. Okpalia kune konge. Yabana masangeshin chilendo ya ninety ten. No eighty twenty. Kiofa no kute astanza ngalutu kule bill. Goba slan. Oh ninety points away price. No eighty points away price. Manje mi na ge gundutuzonge. Kalipisnislamnamtlanju. I praise ya mizo ichulaganjani. I praise kababu zone la. Odemkantu bo fepisnisi. Is omxulaganjani. I praise ya homenya kala pala manje. Ifunukfiga la. So oh ninety. Need a serious review. But no eighty. If you are going to go forward. But. It's. Fiso kuzelala kaku. Slan. Mosanukusenza ma corrections. Si lungisa indo tuteela. Entenge eku. Ibu yeke esolando kutisfuna. Umtsato ozoregulator nganjani ngoba kulendo. Esienza manje. Any biggest omission. Ekona slan. Biggest omission ekona. Okutii. The regulator. Amatenda kahulume. Pe. Our private sector siya wae. And amatenda eh private sector. At three times more. Uxulaga hulume. Enza ni kuta slan. Yabanjoba njengisale hill crest. La big kusangsalakon. Avu ngelo utwishinje big globe. Bensin. Goba kunabantu. Abasemtsitu. Ma ngelabazu xinchalonya report. Avu ngelo ukunduja. Ngisuktalelu iban. Waako slan. Ini. Ilendo kuti private procurement ay regulatory. So ukunumnoto. Ongatinti wabanda babatsi. Zabakamangeza zabamsho. Bese lona opet twenty. Kfane lukubu ora zela wae. I think nala percent slan. I putelkulu slan. Yabo. Siya bo akon. Eh. Mslanbege. Samenokwa. Abanyabazo kuluma na. Abakungeba before. Utati ma ikubui. Oma usuke e da. Shono oge okutu ya kufumela nanepill. Nomakufumela nepill as presented to you. So in other ways. Ma ukede kuluma gula abasazo kulumu. Ifa le ngoguti. We have kufumela nanepill. Orau kufumela nepill. But also try. We link in nama sections. Lawafundi wela. Only if you can. Adon. Angfunu kune sengenpasa mis. Kodan de ikakulgazi. Ilene ti ma usuke e du paun. Bese sushutu ya kufumela nepill. Orau kufumela. Slan. Angufumela nepill. Iga kulgazi o chapter two. No chapter three. No chapter four. Thank you. Masagov. Masagov. Eh un number two.
Uh. Ngerelunpaga kia. Yeleba. Pati sanga pambi. Ki kavala. Okninga umfetusen kafi degon. Eh uma ekala.
Angolisaba. Ikama.
Oh ekama rami. Ungu Alberti sakipiso kela. Kamgawa twenty six. Eh ngipuma nga pants gumkakosa waka. Akusakshi. Eh esami istelo isi kulu. Guba pati sanga pambi. Kuni ngi okseli nje ngubaba besishi. Uma ngibe ra ija. Gi be ra mina gi no seventy years. Ki be ra leja. Esu tutukisa umnoto ase south africa. ETA ipuma eskoline. Iya konana. Nago tuti kisa konu umnoto. Ivi ginalut. Si vesino khulume no ote eh. Power to the people. Uma skuluma ngi power to the people. Si kuluma ngamanja. Kuban dubonke umnani umdalaka. Onga ganan. Ebengikbuka mina kungakusaka kulu. Okutii eh. Uma ilechishecha iti ifiga nemteto. Agisize. Is kaba ngerelele zingani. Kulisimo si profit. Engaga kuti. Uma yutola umsebenzi. Alelelekeke. Kuben sabi detengagi biza. Ngogwami ngiti umvela panda. Okusin gande si pantesi kubegi. Wana umteto. Awumushu. Ngoba sesipumi ile gyanjela. Etipower to the people. Yabo.
Siya bo makulu. Eh umteto si siviniyo. We are amzana na o. Nomak. Ben tesu fala kajana.
Pambi sana kashina. Ngoba awukinanga gumina watela. Ngasisa kana. Ki zoti mina. Kube gani nisame nie pambi. Wege ngishuku tumteto. Movebe. Ge ngituti move. Ndotinge. Okuxen go nyuana.
Siya bo. Number three. Number three sanga tswe kosi.
Oh. I actually thought it was number four. Eh good eh morning and greeting to you eh Jefferson. Eh and eh the members of the house. My name is Galela. Zalela eh from sundus. I'm in the supply chain office. Eh thank you very much for the opportunity. It is very important eh. Yele kalala eh. The first part that I would want to engage on is the issue of the public procurement office. I would agree with the number one. That is first speaker. Eh that I'll I'll propose that office be independent. Eh if it can take the posture of for example the public protector or AG. Eh I think it would add eh very valuable. It could be valuable to the community at large. Eh the second issue. What I'm to talk about. Is the issue of definition. When we define irregular expenditure. The time. That the messages that get to the public. Might not be intended messages. Because currently when we say irregular expenditure to summit. Think that eh. The municipality have done corruption and so on and so forth. But my my wish is that if we can define eh irregular procurement. And define irregular expenditure. Meaning that irregular procurement is whereby you failed to follow it. you failed to follow it procurement. Let me make an example. You were supposed to advertise for 30 days, but you advertised for 28 days, but the expenditure was never irregular. The municipality or whichever state organ has benefited from the process, but it was only that missing those 2 days. So that I would define as the irregular procurement, but the expenditure was never irregular. So that is my, my, my other request. The last one is the issue of eh public-private partnership. I would wish that we can expand on that is eh, eh, public procurement office. Because currently they are, it is so stringent, it is difficult to utilize that section and it can assist the municipalities in particular in revenue collections. I thank you.
Sebo ngab. Eh, number 4. Number 4, ngitube samwe na. Again, unpoetlo. Engatuse. Aglo nanjalila, zukutsenge ikavati. Usurais? Ay, sebo ngabot. Ginbalile njalo nanabupesulu. Eh, ngitwela before ngize ngalang, nganigaze tu. Bakona bafunu paula, I see one end, one two. Kone ngambon. Ikolo zukfagi bu, njalo ngwen ngabon, ngudira. Eh, o 3. Agay kongala. Ba o 3, abadengbabo nepesulu. Ngitwela aaso makone ngimtilili. Adai 3. Ngitwela ngalang, uweke mama ngapaga right. Besse guti pakati ndawo, ngonadkono ngonyama ama footngaapa. Besse ba o number 3, isale ngisbune ngalang. Kone ngazange ngusho. Eh, angad, ngalang, onga chungasondelela mama ngalang. Ngani, ngikuduzu wa zuba wiskri. Ukoni dadikufuna nginome. Ngiboné umningi. Oteke wetu la no mama. Akufe, kukuzelukumbona nibaninga kana. Obalinda wii nuhi, nalinda, ngibonpe la senbaningwa ampe la. Gisjablisaka ku. Ukbonene bafutengatisani asix, ulabesli sana ngin. Really, mi na biyamchukose saka ku, lupona such number of females. Well done. Thank you. Eh, sese ready? Yes. Ngakala.
Eh, sanbonan gurgo chimowa lazoo. Ngifiri rami anda invite like haya, ngisemgane ngumduan na ogninga ngwasi. Kotu angeti me, mesu baba la papa pambi lu number 1. Mi fada i commenting it again, ede rami, we comment here, o guti what determines public, what determines private? Who's a spender, so give legislation country aid, o guti o private, agi uti ne wiveluwa. Si opa, 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 publici, kulesexin yaga privacy, i, i, i value, da, da, da private, meseti aktina go 50 million. O, o private, o publica uwa spend, uwa zenau. Uktola, something kule value yaga privacy. And what determines private? Kotu a gugu public ay. So ngiatela i, o, o, umteto, uku zamwe include isde nganjalo, ngabongakulu.
Sebo akulses. Angvumelika luksho bela ngadi. I really appreciate that comment with, conjunction with o number 1 as well. Eh, o number 2.
Ah, sanbonan ikamla moutobi le kanyele. Ah, sebo ngakulule, presentation, all protocols observed. Um, i, ishui, yame enginayo is the conflict that exists between eh public procurement bill and also E B Act, because we still have the same situation as Mr. Ngema initially indicated. Um, currently, the B Act provides for procurement and also there's a clause in the act that says it trims any other legislation that has a conflict with the B Act. And also, when you look at eh, 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 public procurement bill, o chapter 1, it also has a trapping clause. So we cannot have 2 legislations that talk to procurement and all of them, they have a trapping clause over one another. So it's a conflict within government police. So it needs to be addressed. So I would say let me have the trapping power over all procurement-related matters. And then my worry when it comes to chapter 4, where we're talking about set aside. As a province, we have AMA procurement in Daba regulations and that we took in 2015, but we delaying implementing because of the way procurement legislation has, is designed. So now, the bill still talks about the minister gazetting AMA targets. So that process, I'm worried how long it will take for us to be able to implement AMA set aside. So there will still be further delays in implementing. And then, best I welcome o clause 22, which talks to measures to advance sustainable development. Because whenever we're talking about OBE and asking institutions to implement enterprise development and supplier development, they always take you back to procurement legislation to say there's no provision. So I will welcome that section and also I think it needs to be clear what we're talking about, enterprise development and supply development, so that procurement officials can be confident in implementing. Currently, I do not agree with the bill assistance. Thank you.
Thank you, sis. Eh, the last one.
Eh, ngitwela ukbingalela abashonishwa, abapati ngukshua na kuskuni. Ekama ussebo ngwa argumenti, ngikamderifli espesial. Chambeng ngafegeile, guti, ngwen ngiswaga ngash eh, gulemae, kima khuluma umsindatin e ekwekon. Yame interestwe la papa chapter 4, lengi much preferential procurement. Eh, ben ngitlambe sa bakoni desati, itu ngwen ngusabla 10 points na o 20 points, lo kewa, first speaker and you wa tu, uka tashan. Those 10 points, nama 20 points, mananega ku, slengatinga ba onemo 50, 50, 50 price, 50. Amma preferential points. Because she gasbanengi ngati nama sebenza, abantu befumu ku, suguti si, nsa ngani, uki spaniye se umsebezi. Nange ngelisa feva bona. Because that 20% and 10%, i, 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 ukwega inanega ku, ngijimu, katani sakusungawa, zuti, onga okemi that 20% or, or, or 10, but still was, utu umsebezi, ube above, abantu, abakeme ife, those points. So it's also, uki fanesengi usabantu, uwe previously disadvantaged. Idote si esne interestiyayotin, uki si boniense. So uma asikwe o 50, 50, la price and preferential points, singakjabela tinalogi, logesi kfuna yuuti. Ngembela kube ipini zulu uki, you want to transform. Yabo ngab, i bill gota tahi, agenga amzana wama jantilikse, u ekwe de la main pu tafali.
Sebo akul. Eh, papeli le, pesu. Agayke ngimnushitu, agay. Sengi sa, kubafu etu ngalang. Eh, number 1. Eh, 2 emba wako. Eh, 2. Eh, okay. 3 la payanga semian. 4. Besse, kono nyongala. 5, ukono mu nyongu, number 5, olabetu zewakompoetu. Oras tena 4. 4, agay. Ascale ku number 1. Nega koswa, we asethula, then nige besu shalenda bi, uyobusu vala, njangube vale lu mpoetikunene, ngipil, sebo. Eh, spingalela abashonishwa, kapambi. Utumzana ngubane from PPF, mvoitate construction mafia. Asionale ondu. Eh, asikeslungu, isndaye otuana. I bill, say support. Aslan genga nayo. Ingenga, ngibonimnyango, lapengati funukvula, ngelale ngikosagal. Latwa konu minister, konasogwenzu, uki kwenzu wengala ndelumteto. Wa peli ngenges nayo, kuba ngikosagal. Ilo, ngatikfaleke kulu ngse. Nanu, uki yeku hilas, uki sngasokuluma, ETS, down the line, isu sela kuleka. Nischiyale, uki ukona eh, i legislation, state tender board ka 1968, egwi yonebesa sejenze. Eh, inga agos kaya gile, xutu umsebezi nanu wins, ogo kara lo. Eh, ogo espele, ne supplier procurement act, la pa we clause eh, I mean, kushesulwa. Eh, o guti xasaka on, disgrace line. Ogo tlo, ogo pele xasaka on. Xuti kone ngakwenzga. Akfane, uke ngamshangi, ETS down the line, school male ondu. Maseseti bill, faleke 30 sake lo. Eh, isapoti kulu ngamfoetu, la uku chukumnyama. Isu wena ufaga kakulu, nameki sagaku. Umnyama, majemina na o. O mu nyusebiswa ngoxanga la, aga nyama. Indes katayo okinina. Suwanse, nisha inangeleisha, ngangiyeshana kfechwa ngimnyama. Bebo indya, li indya, egentje kfechwa ngimnyama. I mean, kfige chwekindi. Aseshantwa ngishani, lungsan lesosin. Ogo indemnyama, ebemnyama. Eh, lo ombara, ebemombara, umsanu ku skatis tingosin. Masengi ti, i bill, I'm in full support of it and we are previously disadvantaged. O 70, 89. Ay, o guni. Alike leniusa, number 4, kara glontis benefite kapanki wali. Sebo. Sebo ngab. Number 2.
Eh, sanboya. Ekama usanale koma o S M management, mgen municipality. Eh, sebo ngab, eh, ngatanso, yekituktoja, nanegu previous speaker, jousan de shara pante. Ta la la pa o chapter 1. Uki zile definition ngaplek, iskalu uki zilongse. Asama administrators, we're facing how much challenges when you deal with the issue of preferential procurement? We have a situation where, when you're trying to target, savantosi, savanta wamiyama, eh, aswas, otsiswenzelo, because o plaque is defined in terms of a BE, which is general product design definition, which include other races. So you propose, eh, o, 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 So you propose a little, who is who black has been defined, maybe since it's in African, in particular, let's define that Indian must be Indian, colored must be colored. It doesn't mean what we are saying will never direct any preferential to them, but we just want to know who are we dealing with at what time? Eh still in chapter one, if you know what's a highlight, lapa we procurement, public procurement office eh, I think I must raise it, we appreciate the process and you support the bill. We've been with the process since the beginning eh, we are here for what's again, this process is yielding results, we have submitted our comments to the national assembly, they've been addressed some of them and we felt what's again, we need to enhance and bring those to attention, those that were not addressed. The public procurement office, I support the establishment at national treasure. However, the bill, if you look at part two, section six, it also provides some of the powers to the provincial treasuries, which they must also play part in terms of safeguarding the implementation of this document. But we don't know at provincial treasuries which section is responsible for that. Now, the situation that you face, you are facing a situation where the office at the provincial treasury that is responsible for implementation of this document is misplaced or misaligned, because it is not founded in the legislation, it's a matter of who decides to place it where, whenever they they fill a list of cards. So we we would propose, we would say, the public procurement office must be national treasury and also it must be public procurement office at the provincial treasury, which will also, so, in the provincial treasury's function, but it must be clearly defined in the legislation and it must also have own powers that will access, that will exercise. So this is the first part and we also want to highlight, we would say, at moment, there is an office called eh, provincial subway, which is responsible for this functions, that's the office that you want to eh, have established in the same manner as public procurement office at the provincial level. Eh the establishment of procurement function in section twenty eight eh, in the institution now, in the individual institution. We raised this comment before eh, I think this section previously was said, that's establishment of procurement office, but now it has been changed to the eh, establishment of procurement function in the institution, which is still does not address our concern, we would say. If you look at the establishment of the public procurement office, there is a clear direct intent, which we are establishing under the treasure. But if we are establishing an, an office, a public procurement office, there is nothing that says where, the bill is silent in that and it opens a, a designer, a case of a, a police to S M offices within the institution, because any accounting officer may just decide, it's okay, mina, I feel like I can establish procurement under IT. And then I figure, depending how they feel, this is not a move, I think I need to establish you under corporate services, there is no sense of direction. So in that case, we'd like to request, we would say, the bill should be clear, like the current estab- establishment in the eh, eh treasure regulations, it's clear that the CFO must be the supervisor of this office. So what we are saying as procurement practitioners is that we should be directly accounting to the accounting officer, understanding the strategic of this office, that also leads to, we have an intention of professionalizing supply chain management. And we don't, we don't believe, we can successfully professionalize a board under a board. CFOs are, are, are belonging to each other accountant, so if we, if we continuously belong to the CFOs and the CFOs, which means we must professionalize supply chains under each other accountant. So we are, we are of the view that we should be established separately and be accountable to the accounting officer or accounting authority for us to be fully functional. Eh, chapter six, part two, which is the procurement tribunal. Of handling the tribunal matters, we've been handling eh, handling tribunal matters, we know the experience, we know the frustrations, we know the backlog. This mechanism that is provided for by this document will never work. I think the colleagues eh, have highlighted that the, the frustrations that they face with national treasure, to get a response on one paper on your concern from national treasure room, you must wait at this for two, two, three months, six months, before you get a response. So how much more if you establish a, a mechanism to solve problems that are directly affecting the service delivery? So that means you'll have a project that is just sitting there, for ages, this has not been resolved. So we're saying, it's fine, they can establish this tribunal at a central, at a central level, but they must also have ama branches at, at, at provincial level, which will deal with tribunal matters at provincial level, because we have bulk of procurement and it's one way to establish it in the sense of the current eh, public procurement bill. Also adding to the frustration is that we do, we also don't feel, we would say, there will be partial application or functioning of this tribunal if it is established under the political oversight. If we want to solve problems, I think this is the main office that should be independent from political oversight, so that we can try and minimize as much conflicts of interest as possible, because if you can make an example or based on our previous experience, is that anyone has anything that they want. Therefore, one matter can be brought forward to this tribunal and you find that the minute is there, points, the tribunal is conflicted by that project, what is gonna happen? Thank you. Sebo. Number three. Number three. Sengasabi jaluwenu mtsanga. Osumboli number three, naa kaka li. Oh, okay.
Ah, also for me, let's talk about this, yeah, uh, as, as a police eh, unina nonke mkonanga pagati, we come to talk about, I guess, before singele, guma in tools, sandele, wa gakabela from Ingonyama Trust. I guess, eh, 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 no, as a confessor, we see, in public procurement, it is indeed a cornerstone, good governance, also to advance the transformation agenda and also, eh, to ensure, we see, eh, 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 quality service delivery happens. But again, if you're gonna then not properly define what is meant by preferential procurement in the bill. Because in chapter four, we'll document a preferential procurement, but good visioning now, eh, 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 eh. Secondly, check all the provisions that we feel have been omitted here. You know, in procurement or in any space, there will be a conflict of interest. It helps then and to define what is that in a sense of a procurement, maybe as part of ama additions, guma, guma, guma definitions. And chaplaincy, we discussed it here, I heard the presentation was saying, if you are told by people who are senior to do something, you must not do it, you must refuse if it is not in accordance with that. They even said there is transparency, but what is transparency? Why is this not defined eh? So what is untrue influence? Because if then you are influenced like that, it's untrue influence, define it then. When that matter comes up, because you have provided ama measures to deal with it, but we have not defined it, that is a problem, check, when you go to ama issues of a discipline. Eh, since the conclude chaplaincy, there is also this thing of a written submissions. Ukona la, first one letter, gubabutiri, jawan shila before eight march, ukona amanyegi after twenty-two February, as a parliament, it's a committee of finance. So we need to be careful, maybe when you conclude, we would say, can you send the same submission? Eh, this is a, a parliament, eh, 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 umuntu ke chaplaincy, because it's been involved in our procurement, the bill is a supporter, as long as these inputs that will be given are clearly, clearly eh, 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 we all, I thank you, check. Sebo makulu. Eh, cause. Makulwe inisralo, no, nbeso yoki, umphumsetria, emsimkula municipality, contracts manager. Eh, okuamke, beguso by mebo osu, kotwa ke, utla masan zama in tools, in putiamila, paku ma objectives of the bill eh, in do eti, ndiam, kasa putilo eh, kule in do eti, language ya le bill, this is what I eh, la masan zama in tools, we see, one, ma ikbe guma official languages, onke, eh, 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 eh,[827.68]